In the Aasirudikupattai, muddalam nal maale veli kage, nan kattarai, nandhi oru stutha thurigare.
Me Aasirilak, palivini davase sandhava, udessa maavunvasira prashansakaranemi.
I pray is called for this blessed evening in your midst.
In the naatkali, nam vedatil arokeye tekurithu, nam padike vandhirukaram.
Me davasule, shuddha leevile, divya saniparakshavak ilibandhava, igana ganiyamata, apras visitnav.
We're all gathered together to learn about divine health right from the scriptures.
Eremiya thirukadrisin puustagum, 33 raamadigaram, aravasanathirke, oru visay namudaya gavanathi, nam kondu varalam.
Yeremya, this thungeni parichede, hayavani pathi vedetan, apagai avadhanaya yomukaramo.
Let us all for once bring our attention to Jeremiah chapter 3 verse 6. And I will cure them and will reveal unto them the abundance of peace and truth.
Idho, naan avrilikkus soukyavum, arokyavum varappani, avrulikku gunamaki, avrulikkupari purnasamaadhantiyam, satyatiyam velipirtuvay.
Balavu mama, it sanipiyat suyathupadava, ondasuukataboh samadhani saasabegam ond, prakashukaranemi.
Katturuye parisutha namathukumai mundavada.
Saminavasikishudho, naavitamahimayeva.
May the holy name of the Lord be glorified.
Manidavallvil, manidhanakkum arokeyam, migavum avasiyamaha kaanappadukarad.
Minis vargattu, divya saniparakshavak avashekarnav.
Divine heal, health is something very compulsory, indispensable to mankind.
In the worldathile, avanikku valumbudiyanay, palavidamana karayangale, devan koduthirundhalum, avan petthirundhalum, avanikku arokeyam illavital, adhur, matthavigale vaitthu, avanikkentha bayanum illamal poivudukarad.
Me lokhit, minis jivite pavatma venven, unvasi noikudde labadunna, ediva laba on buktivindhat, minisi kutat niroki baviyin netinam, ogin palak vaneenath.
It could be so true that God may have provided all sorts of things for the sake of man, for the existence of man, but still through all if he's on, if he's not able to have good health, he's not going to enjoy them.
Tanudaya vallvil, avanikku arokeyam illavital, avan padari poivudukarad.
Ohu, tamaki jivite divya niroki baviyin netinam, odukita datve kadakinnu labai.
He is in a state of distress if there is no good health in his life.
Indhake, in the kadaesi naatkali, 24 amutthandile, nam vandhu kondurukumbodu, manidhan arokeye tehtedi, palaidangalile alainthu thirihurathin kodha, nam kankudha ase parkaram.
Visiakvili seetha, vitsiyavasita patha bativena, appa, niroki baviy, saniparakshavak patha, minisa noikutsa aganim karinabavathu, appadakinni.
And we who are seen in this 21st century are able to witness this fact and truth, that man is trying so many methods to reach or find good health in his life.
In the muddalam nal maale veli nekadum vandhirukkara, anekad devanudiyapulligal kodha, arokeyam aththuralaga, tanudiyavankailirupothi, ningal unarukiriyark.
Devadarvankeen bohotinappava, tamanki jivite niroki baviyak, saniparakshavakin thoreva, divyakevenabava, appadadhaka dhaakivathivinava.
And even namanthe people of God, we are able to see that there are so many who are seen without good health.
Sukkam kidekkumudiyaag, manidhan palaidangalikkadu alainthu thirihara.
Sanipesuvela bhaakinnitam nohakiva, manushya obumubagamankariminsiti.
And man is seen roaming about wandering here and there in order to seek good health.
Maruthuvargal kodha, manidhanai gunamakka, palamayarchigal edukkarark, mudiyada pachathile, avrulikku solukkarark, omgal devangalai thedi ponggal, endra aniupidukarark.
Vaidhvaraya pava, roga thuriyas soka kirimasadaha, anekavada prayatna daranathara, avungiprayate avasani asartak baviy, atthakilavita, obagai divyan sikaraganna yanuvain, vaidhvaraya pavisai.
Even the doctors and physicians, they end there was so much, in order that their patients may be healed of all their sicknesses, and be in good health eventually, they tell them, you go and reach your God and seek God.
Devan manidhanai sistiikum kodhu, avanai arokeyamulla vanaaga, nallasugadheyiaga, avanai needitha valluulla vanaaga, sistiitha arindre, nam vedatile parkaiyelum.
Devanvahs visin minisa maavunulabu avastavadi, niroki baviyaha, soukyasampala kenuku hatieta, deerka yusha athi, manushyakulathita, manushyavam maavunulabu bava, appaddeva bachane dakkinava.
And this is what we see in the evidence of the word of God, when God created man, that God created him in sound health and strength, and has sworn who would have eternal life.
Appudi irukkum kodhu, epodhu yen, manidhan ivadu vyadiyum, ivadu vedanigalum, vyadiikkupuri periyalistha vaitukondu, adhur, prusthijiboala, avan sumandhu kodhu thirihrane, arukka karanandhan yenna?
Ay, esee tibyadi, manushya rogiyan peedithavemi, noikudroka ilibandhava hariyata, laistuak potlaistuak mainaate tabakina, suyepath sahanepatha, enne yata yanleta, hethuakumad.
Now, when the man, a matter is such, how is it that man is seen, not seen without good health and strength, and he is seen with a list of reasons as to why he is sick, and why is he wandering here and there?
Andhavur manidhanai undakkena kodhu, avanikku adhikamana varushangalai, jivianatkale kootikoduthirundhar, 3000thuk adhikamana varudangal, manidhan needitha aysullavanaga, sugadheyiaga valandhada, vedam sutikaathikarad.
Manushyavadivinvahasi maavu avastavadi, deerka yushain saha, digukal vasara ganinavak jivatvime, attain manushyavam maavunulabu, athra, deva bachane sadhanuvadu paradi, vasara namasyappava, adhika kalyak jivathu manushyan, appadadhaka dhaakivinava.
And this is what the word of God points out and say, when God created man, God created him with such long years and life, and there have been people in the history, in the Old Testament, where people have lived for more than 900 years.
Adam, 34 varudam valdhu dhaak vedam solukarad.
Adam pitibandhivasadhanvani, oh vasara namasyathiyakupramana kalyak jivathu bava.
It is said about Adam, he lived for 930 years.
Noah, 35 varudam valdhu dhaak vedam solukarad.
Noah pitibandhiva kia, thibinava, oh vasara namasya, pana jivathu bava.
It is said about Noah, that he lived for more than 950 years.
Mithusala, 369 varudam valdhu dhaak vedam solukarad.
Mithusala vasara namasye hatan namayak jivathu bava, deva bachane sadhanvadi.
It is said about Mithusala, in the word of God, that he lived for 969 years.
Anal manidha samudhayathile, pavangalum, akkaramangalum, devanai vittu velagipohura, palathanmigalum vandhavodu, manidavallvi kurayindukondae varugarad, dhaak vedam solukarad.
Minis samajesthula, noikutakara papa parathu, devinvahasiv visin, pillukulkarana, noikudhusiruthaha, noikuddeva lathulima karnukutikina, manushyaagai jivitakala, sima ubava, appadakinnava.
And this is the reason for the law, a span of mankind to reduce, it is all because of the abundance of inequity, abundance of all unrighteousness, and all the bad and evil habits in man.
Enukke 365 varudangala, avundiyavalkai kurakappadukarad.
Enukke jivite vasarathu siyhatapaha katta, ketikannulabu bava, appa pindakinnava.
And we can see about the lifespan of Enoch, that it was reduced or limited to 965 years.
Moiseyunudiyavallvai pathal, 120 varudangalikkavandhu vudukarad.
Moseski jivite balanavita, vasarekasi visseki.
And Moses lived just for 120 years.
Sangidathile, nam 30 ram sangidathai parkumbodu.
Apigita vali, aluvali parichede, perela balanavastavadi.
When we turn to the 90th psalm.
10 vasanam ennassolukarad.
Dhavani pathi kumakkiyaid.
What does verse 10 say?
70 varudam, illavatal belathin mikidiinal, 80 varudam inti sutikaathappadukarad.
Jivite davas, auraduhathtevaki, shaktiathlam auradu asavaki.
The days of our years are 70, and by reason of strength, it'll be 80 years.
Anal epodhu 40, 30, epodi pathavayathile, avrulikku othaththi mudithuvadalam, indru yenakudiyavu, urukkalathile talapotukaram.
Nuputh vasara hathaliyakintiyakinnvane, ketikalekinn jivita avasana karanulavunavakya, sitanatay edina kalyekata, apipatha bativedava.
But we are all stepped on into a period of time, where we think that man has to put an end to his life, when he becomes 30 or 40 years.
Manidhan devan kurgiyavallvil, tanudiy othaththi mudikevendu, virmukharara?
Minisa, tamaki jivite, ketikalekinn avasalkale yuthuyai, devinvahasik kamathivanasek.
And is it the will and pleasure of God for man to complete his years within a short period?
Avan chinnavayathile, vyadi pathu marikevendu, devanudiyamanathile irukkara, enbadu ningal kettupathal, illave illa.
Balavu yedhi, minisa, jiviteen samuktha yuthuyakya, devinvahasai, apyakshakaranavada, evanda, unvasikimmanase, aththemanath.
If you will raise a question, whether it is the will and the pleasure of God for man to end up his life, when he is a youth, it is not so at all.
Devanum, illavatal uuliyargalum, uru manidhan, uru viswasi, uru uuliyan, avan needitha vaishnaklaaga, ellavathile valandhu sugamaayirkuvanuvay, avrulikku virmukharark.
Devinvahasik sevakya, adhivivathun devadarvan, manushyan yanadisiyallama, siyudhenama, siyalledi, sapalavathu, onthiikayushalabad, jivatvay yuthuyai, noh seapyakshakarnav.
It is the will and the pleasure of God, that every servant of God and the believer, every child of God, and including every general, all the people in general, should live a long, for a long period of time, and be in good health and strength.
33 raamuyovan, 2 vasanam solukarad, periyamana vane, unaththuma valgadu bole, nee ellavathile valandhu sugamaayirkumbedi vendukarain, adavudhu aththuma, avukali veyilla, appudi pathor, valkeni, in the worldathile valumbudiyaag, nan virmukharan, indru, uru uuliyan solukarad.
Pravevante, nubeyaththi, athmee sapalavanna, minma, nubasyalle, sapalvane lesete, swasiesitna lesete, yakakarimi, enam, athmee kisidu vinashyak, athno, nodakke yuthuyanuvain, ekthara devasere ikukum, methesandhankarath.
This is what we read, as the words of the saint of God in John, but still, beloved of all things, that thou may prosper and be in health, even as the soul prospers, even as the soul is incorruptible, we see, that he needs to be in good health and strength too.
Indraya subject vandhu, deviiga sugamala, deviiga arokeyam.
Adha, pamathukavange, divya soynuvay, divya saniparakshavay.
The subject of our Bible studies is not divine healing, but divine health.
Oru devanudiyamanidhan, deviiga sugaththi jabathin moolamaga, petthukondukarad, deviiga arokeyam enbadu, avanikku vyadiyavaramal, appadi vandhal, odanadiyaga healagara, uru thanmayethan, adusutikaathikarad.
Devadaruvaku rogiyavan avastavadi, yakakar, ohlama gannav souya, divya souya ve, nuputh divya saniparakshavakya, kinnivita, evani kisimathayap net, enam, evan, ah, hadisi, roga thuravimaksiluvad, shanikasvay lama gannav kramiyap ilibandhavai.
When you talk about divine healing, it is the healing you gain, a child of God gains, when he or she becomes sick and waits on the Lord, and receives healing, but divine health is not so, it is even at the time when you suddenly fall ill, you will recover soon and be in good health and strength.
Saya, 33, 24, parkumbodu, nagaravasiygal vyadi pathukarindru, solukadilai, endra, uru vaakuthattham, angayesolupathukarad.
Yesaya, this thungeni parichede, visi hatharvini pathi kia, thibinava, thama lediniyai, ekisivasiyai, nokyaniyakya.
This is what we read in Isaiah, chapter 33, verse 24, and the inhabitant shall not say, "I am sick."
Anali indhreki manidharagal, illavatal viswasiygal, illavatal uuliyargal, devanudiyapulligal, innake, anekar vyadi pathukaradhum, arokeyam kurayindhanalavathile, tanudiyavalkai mudikaradhum, nam neradiyaga sabailae parkaram.
Nuputh, adha, devadarvan, devaserekya, adhivivathun, minisin, tamanki jivite, souya nolaba, netinam, divya saniparakshavak nolabama, tamanki jivita kelavarukarana ayuru, appadakinnu labanava.
But this is what you see in the present world today, even the believers and the servants of God, the children of God, and even the people in general, without recovering from their sickness, and while in their sickness, infirmity, they pass away.
Deviiga arokeyam endusunnal, adusarvanga sugaththi sutikaathikarad.
Divya saniparakshavakya navita, esarvanga souya pennunkarai.
Now, when you talk about divine health, it talks having the health perfectly.
Apostle 366, indhavartie ningal parkamudiyam.
Priyapothi thungeni parichede, da hatharvini pathi, me pathi obadikiyavannata puluvana.
We can read about this term in Acts, chapter 3, verse 14.
Anal epodi irukkum kodhu, indhreki devanudiyapulligal kodha, abhishekambethavargal kodha, nallavavi kurya janangal kodha, vyadi pathukarad, parukaramay, idhukka karanam ennayenbadu, indhreki, nam muddalal, nam sindikalam.
Methes tibyadi, devaserekya, netivathun, roga thuravana ayuru appadakinnimu, meedha hethukarakya kumakthayannu, adhavasya pahatharaamalamu.
And when the issue is such, we can see, even still, the servants of God and the believers, being in sickness and infirmity, let us see the reasons for it.
Vyadi kana 3 karanangalai, naan indhreki muddalal, omgalikum vandhava vikkerimukharain.
Apesadaha, karunuthuna, hatharak, maavuva, idhriyetha pannata kamathivim.
I wish to place before you three reasons for sickness.
Arokeye tekkadukkukudiya 3 sakthihaal.
Enam, appagai, saniparakshavu, vanasa damalu, balaveegathunna.
Three forces which can destroy our divine health.
Mu sangida 38, 3, illavatal 7, in the 2 vasanangalai, nam parkumbodu.
Geetavadi this, aththi thungeni pathi, me pathi obadikiyavam balanavita.
We return to Psalm 38 and read verse 3.
Omadu koobathinall, en maamsathil arokeyam illai.
Obagai udhasanisa, maagim maanshi, kisi niroki bavaknet.
There is no soundness in my flesh because of thine anger.
En paavathinall, en elumbugalil soukyam illai.
Maagipapi nisa, maagie atavalata kisi tepayaknet.
Now, there is no rest in my bones because of my sin.
7 vasanam solukarad, en maamsathil arokeyam illai, endra, sangida karan, abhishekambanna pathavan, devanudiyamanidhan, devanudiyurudayathuketavan, than pathikappadasuunle, avan sutikaathikarad.
Nuputh, devinvahasikisitha tekukam manushyaku, devinvahasikikamathikala, odhavitnemitha, hathvinipathikiyathivinava, maagim maanshi, kisi niroki bava, netaykya.
David was a man after the heart of God, and he was an anointed man of God, and this is what he talks about the state of his life, he says, "There is no soundness in my flesh."
Idhu David arokeyam illamal pone, uru suunle, sutikaathikarad.
Me pennunkarane, Davidke jivite, ohu, niroki baviy, netilam souya, netikaragat avastavati.
So, this pinpoints an instance or a situation where David lost the divine health in his life.
Avanudiyavyadi, thira vyadiyaga, machapattad, endra, 44 ram sangidham, 8 vasanam solukarad.
Geetavadi, hathalis ekvini parichede, athavani pathi, sadhalkarana paradi, ohu, rogiyav, oathvillavatiyabavasadhalukarati.
And according to Psalm 41, verse 8, it is mentioned about his disease, that it was incurable.
Andhavyadi pathu, aththavargal sonna, arikke yenna?
Esabala, anneyakalav, prakashikumad.
And what were the things that were expressed by other people seeing this disease?
Thira vyadi avanipidithukondad, innamel, padukkailirundha, avan yedundripadalai, avanikke judgment vandhavitad, endralan, anekarpesa arambithark.
Ohu, naapurulera, enam, sou, novanav, rogiyakota, valladiithipe, ohu, otthiyahane, minnanathuro, negittinene, netayyanuvain, on prakashakala.
This and evil disease has clearly cleared the path unto him, he will lie there and rise up no more.
Avan thanne devanudiyasannidhanathile, 65 pathupodu, avan solukarad, enudiyapavathinall, enakku soukyam illamal poivutad.
Devavibukke, samaki jivite, soujsikala, belu avastavadi, Davidthavasive, maagim varadunisa, maagisanipe, maavithin turanugostivinava yakyaya.
And this was the conclusion of the matter, even when David searched out his life, being in that disease or sickness, he says, "Because of my sin and errors, I am in sickness like this."
Tanudiyavavaththai, avun unarundhavodu, avanudiyarikke eduva kundad.
Tamaki papiyath erungad avastavadi, ohu, kiyaasitima, kebantuvatimunada.
What was the confession of David when he acknowledged his sins?
43 ram sangidham, 3 vasanam solukarad, padukkainmel vyadiyai kadaakara, avanai kattur thanguvar, avunudiyavyadile, avunudiyavadukkai muluvadiyum, devam maathipoduvar.
Thukini pathi, methes kia, thibinava, saminvahasai, ohu, gilaanma, otthiyahane, citinavita, usaranasake, ohu, ki mulu rogiyahan, unvasi venaskaranasek, yanuvain.
This is what we read in Psalm 41, verse 3, the Lord will strengthen him upon the bed of languishing, thou wilt make all his bed in his sickness.
Anuvaanuvle, ningal vyadi pathukamodu, adhundiyavurukkaranam, paavamaga irukkalam.
Pemathini, obaroki vanavita, ita ekka hethva, papiyaviyak.
Dear beloved, it could be because of your sin that you may be sick.
Kadhu Davidanudiyatholvin kalam, endru, ningal vedatile parkamudiyam.
Davidke parajayi, thahethukarakya, kushinabadu, dadhaka dhaak.
And we can also talk about the life of David, that it was the reason of his failure.
Naan paavam seethavodu, in the vyadi, avanithodhundhada, tanudiyapulligal pathithada, avan solukarad.
Me rogiyath, eh, hetukotikine, tamataveldhunabava, eh, hetukotikine, tamaki, darvanthu bava, ethrin, balapam, aththu bava, oh, sadhankarathivinava.
Also, in his confession or expression, he says, he was saying that this is clearly passed unto him, and his child was affected because of this.
Naan idhachonnavudanay, ningal odanadiyaga, uru conclusionikku vandhavutakurad, ellaviyadiyum, paavathinall, varugaravandhu, ningal kadaesiile, uru mudivukka, ningal varangay.
Ma, methes kiena, athra varaythima, obavastan thirenekka, elboganiyamasudusunnavay, enam, me hemma, rogiyakadame, hethu, papiyakya, oba, me, avasana, vandhuru, madaxit, anathurut, thirenekaran.
And even as I talk to you, don't ever come to the conclusion, that the reason for your sickness is always sin, you listen to my sermon entirely, then you make the conclusion.
Odhu devanudiyamanidhan thavuri seyimudu, devanai adikirad, adhanala, avunudiyavarokke, kodha kadandu poivudukarad.
Devadarukvaradukana, avastavadi, devinvahasikipaharathu, ulappidavam, me hetukotikine, ohu, ki sanipir, ohu, thinni, ivatvinyanava.
When man child of God or a man of God shall make any errors before the Lord, against the Lord, he is beaten or smitten by the Lord, and therefore he becomes sick.
41 ram sangidham, 10 vasanathile, avan solukarad, umudiyakaratthi, adigala, an sorundhubukarin, enniilirundhu, umudiyavyadiyay, enudiyavyadiyay, illavatal vaadayay, enniilirundhu, eduthupodu, endra, avan kenchukarad.
Geetav, this namavini geetavadi, dhahani pathi, obagai pahar, maakri divathkalam, manavu, obagai athpaharin, esee nonnila, makshaviyami, yanuvain, oh, sadhankarai.
And according to Psalm 39, verse 10, he is speaking in the Lord, saying, "Remove thy stroke away from me, I am consumed by the blow of thine hand."
Tanudiyaparisutha namathukumai mundavada.
Saminavasikishudho, naavitamahimayeva.
Glory be unto the name of God.
Eremiya, 14, 94, nam parkumbodu.
Yeremya, da hatharvini parichede, dhahan, namavini pathi, apakiva, balanavastha.
When we turn to Jeremiah, chapter 14, and read verse 19.
Naangal arokeyam adayakkurad, bodi, devuri, neer yen, engalai adithir, endru, uru manidhan kettukarad.
Appadisvivivak, netin, vannapinisa, obamputipaharathu, dulne, makni sadai, me manushya prashna kritiviva.
This is what the man of God questioning, saying, "Why hast thou smitten us, and that there is no healing for us?"
Paavangal narayudumbodu, ichyayana, thukarpandari, thupavaththi, prapikum, paavam purnamagumbodu, vyadiyay, maranaththi, prapikim, endra, yaakub 1, 19, nam parkaiyam.
Yaakub, pote, palivini parichede, dhahatthungini, dhaththungini pathi kia, thibinava, papi, pa, trushnavu filisathakali, papi vadaniy, papi sampullo kali, marani upadavannay, upadavannay, yanuvain, paalasini pathi kia, thibinava.
This is what we read in the book of James, in verse 15, that when that will be seen occurring, it will bring forth, and that will be last, and all sorts of consciousness taking place, and as a result, it will bring forth disease or sickness.
In the maale velile, omgal, yadukavudhu, vyadigal, belavinangal, arokeyam adayakkurad, bodi, edavudhu, porathangal, irukkumanaal, ningal, kattundha, sannidhanaththi, vittu, ningal, thirupi, poheradukum, vandhava, omgal, ningal, devanudiyasannidhanathile, 65, adhu, omgalidhi, vallvil, urubidukalai, kondu varukarad.
Saya, niroki baviy, obagai jivite, athvitiyamadu, nohakiva, noikutakara, roga pida, durulathaa, obagai jivite, porabathineneenam, devavakimukken, beharavannata, prathamineen, obagai jivite, soodisikara, balanna, esee soodisikara, galima, obagai souya, hethukarakya, vannava, ath.
If you are stricken with any sickness and ripsicles or disease, is serving against your life, in your life, you make sure that you will search out your life, before you leave the presence of God, and that will bring out a real solution in your life.
Devanudhatthala, adivangi, nam muniware, naan omgalikku solukarad.
I shall mention before you three people who was beaten by the Lord.
Devinvahasiv visin thukalabu, puthkalayantidunak ilibandhava, baavu, idhriyetha, bannemi.
2 ram samuel, 12 madigaram, 15 vasanathile, andhupulliyay devan adikirad, Davidin pulliyay devam adikirad, adhuvyadi pathuk, kevalama, irundhu, maranathile, sandhitu vudukarad.
Devanisamay, tholasikiparichede, paalasikipathis, saminvahasiv visin, en, nadruvaadu paharathun, bevin, ladruva, roga thuravu, itamath, asathiyathappe, dakulabu, bavasadhampe.
This is what we read in 2 Samuel, chapter 12, verse 15, because of the beating on the Lord, we see as to how the Lord smote the child, and he was suffering there because of a terrible sickness.
Ithuthukupohavindhi, nathathile, illavatal jabathukupohavindhi, nathathile, sugubogutti, maamsi, ichigal, ineravetchu, mudiyaga, avan tanudiyedanguduthavodu, avunudiyasandari, adikapadukarad, adhukkevalama, marivudukarad.
Yudhetha, netinam, yathyavudhu, yaitu, niyavitha, velavu, edival, aththbasukar, aththbasukarameen, tamaki trushnavathu saha, papiyath, hethu, idhavamineen, jivathvana, avastavadi, devinvahasikipaharathu, ulapuna, athra, minisin, darvan, roga thuravannata, eh, hethukarakya, vannava.
Even at the point in time when he should have gone for the battle, he gave room to comfort and all sorts of blessings in his life, and therefore, he became smitten by the Lord, and there was a destruction to his seed.
Jabanathathile, ningal, andhathukupohada, pachathil, ichyayin, vallamigal, omgalodu, poradum, ningal, vyadiyastara, illavatal devanathil, vandhadi, vangal, kudiyalai, marukariray.
Yathyavudhu, yaitu, velavu, oba, emasaniyad, noyamak, hethukotikine, devinvahasikipaharathu, oba, lakkinava, eh, hethukotikine, devinvahasai, vetin, oba, shabeyak, paharakla, bagannava.
When you fail to go for prayers at the time when you should give it to the Lord, and you become smitten by the Lord, and therefore, there becomes, comes a destruction in your life.
2 ram samuel, 6 madigaram, 7 vasanaththi, parkumbodu, devanudiyapitti, asandhavodu, usha, piddithaan, kattaravani, adithaar, adavudhu, uuliyathile, ningal, avasiyam illamal, thalidumbodu, adhu, omgalikka, adiyaga, arokeyam, thunelavathukulay, omgalik, kondu poivudukarad, yen, maranathukukudha, omgalik, kondu poivudukum.
Devanisamay, hayvini parichede, hathvinipathis, sadhanparadi, eh, give some petty, eh, give some petty, eh, harakthankulunisas, sinavipada, eh, bajani, ubavin, osai, thatha, gesva, eh, avastavadi, saminvahasa, odhupaharathunna, eh, musthane, oh, jivitakshita, pathuva, eh, isid, moogas, seveta, anavashalisa, aththa, hisa, damima, parlokathikina, devinvahasikipaharathu, lakvanapuluvan, eh, havthukadikina, obata, thamvit, maranidupava, mune, denasidu, vennapuluvan.
In the same manner, we see in 2 Samuel, chapter 6, verse 7, because of the ark of the common man, which joke, Uzzah tried to hold it, and we see, was smitten by the Lord, and he died, and in the same manner, unnecessarily, when you indulge in God's service or ministry, you will be smitten by God, and there comes a destruction.
Ivagallam thirindabidinall, than David solukarad, periyakarayangalilum, minjanakarumangalilum, nan thalidukarade, illai, en, thaayin, palmarundha, kulandhey, bole, en, aththmaavi, nan, adakki, amara, ponineneen, endra, tanudiyanuvavut, evan solukarad.
Me pitibandhiva, mana, avobodhyak, labathigunav, Davidthavasive, pamanitha, vada, matam, makipamana, vada, lokukarana, valitha, methi, novimi, eh, bhatta, mama, athna, nodamimi, me, velisak, kiri, me, 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 deva, vana, paharathu, lakvadu, sidhuvanavakya, oh, tamaki, athme, damane, thara, aarakshakaragav, sadhankarathivinava.
That is why, with this knowledge, King David says, "I will not exercise myself in great matters or in things too high for me, surely I will behave myself and quiet myself, and become like a child that is weaned."
2 ram naalagum, 26 madigaram, 24 vasanaththi, parkumbodu, angay, usha, engaram, manidhan, uuliyathile, thalayithu, asari, uuliyaththi, thansayam, muthpottabodu, avan devanudiyasannidhanathile, adivangi, kushtaro, yaga, devanudiyasannidhanaththi, vittu, veliyay, oduvavirukran, kadaesi, varay, avanikku sugam kidekkavellai.
Devanlekam, visi, hayvini parichede, visi, devan, pathi, usya, nemadi, pugalaya, pojukasaveta, anavashalisa, noyithulisa, aththa, bimadukka, hethukotikine, devinvahasa, odhupaharathi, kushnero, kiyukavata, patthuathra, ohu, ki jivitaanthe, dakvava, oh, souya, nolaba, me, kiyavasadhal, vannava.
According to what we read in 2 Chronicles, chapter 26, verse 22, King Uzzaya also, he tried to do the work of a priest there, and he became smitten by the Lord, he became a leper, and eventually, he faced destruction in his life.
Oru viswasiyapodu, vyadi pathukarad, arokeythi, yedundhubukarad. Oru viswasiyapodu, arokeythi, yedundhubukarad.
Athilivath, eh, go, tamaki, niroki baviy, netikaragani, koyavavathukada.
When does a believer lose his good health and strength?
Ennagum, 9 madigaram, 13 vasanathile, katturuyapandhiyay, illavatal, baskavay, asariamal, bhukumbodu, uru devanudiyapulliyav, vyadiyulavanaaga, mara, vay, avanikirukarad.
Ganankathaavana, namavini parichede, dhaththungini pathi, sadhalukaradi, devinvahasikisabat, davas, sarvamirima, aththbasukarannav, devadarukut, the minisin, rogiyavannata, hethu, ath.
When you read Numbers, chapter 9, verse 13, we can see, when a child of God will fail to keep the Sabbath, and fail to observe the Sabbath, he will be smitten by the Lord, he commits a sin against the Lord.
Ubhagam, 23 madigaram, 24 vasanaththi, parkumbodu, uru viswasiyapodu, poruthanay, panni vittu, adhun, neravetchamal, bhukarano, appodu, avanikka, vyadiyaga, mara, vay, vurukarad.
Dweethi katha, visithungeli, parichede, visiak.
Enadha, adhu, avanikku paavamaga, marukarad.
Dweethi katha, visithune, visiak, eh, thivanteku, devinvahasita, bariyapi, eya, istha, lokrenavastavadi, eh, ohu, thapapiyakavata, patvavava.
Where according to Deuteronomy, chapter 23, verse 21, when a child of God will make a covenant with the Lord, when he fails to observe it or hate, it becomes a sin, and therefore, he becomes smitten by the Lord.
Baskavay, asariamal, bhukumbodu, nee paavayai, marukarai, paavathinimitum, vyadi, ulle, vandhuvadukarad.
Aska, sarvamirima, sarvamirima, aththbasikrima, hethukotikine, oba, paavkar, papiyakkarunlabanava, eh, hethukotikine, saminvahasavudhu, paharatheneethu, sidhuvanava.
When you fail to keep the Sabbath, observe the Sabbath, the Lord, you commit a sin against the Lord, and therefore, the Lord smites you.
Uruthanay, pannadhe.
Enisa, bariyakavanna.
So therefore, don't make a covenant in that manner.
Panninall, adhu, neen, neravetchavendam.
Bariyakuvavanna, ani, bariyam, isthakalayathui.
And when you make a covenant, you have to observe it, pay it with a sacrifice.
Miisayi, edukadhe, edutal, vikkadhe. Solukarad, mustache.
Don't remove the mustache, but if you remove the mustache, don't have it back once again.
Nagayi, edukadhe, edutal, thiripipodadhe.
Don't take jewelry, but if you take it once again, remove it, don't put it once again.
Ahvarnam.
Ahvarana, galavatamminam, nevathay, nopalathinna.
Unudiyavalkaila, nee marundheda, edukamaten, indru, sunnal, marundheda, edukadhe.
Obagai jivite, oba, behikani, netay, oba, thirenekka, lenam, eh, noganinna.
If you make a covenant in your life, that you will not take medicine, don't ever take it.
Indhamaarkathala, vandhaparag, double act, triple act, all, panna, kuradhe, nee, uray, veshanam, poodanam.
Me, me, satyathavit, anua, me, kendi, matanua, oba, devadi jivitha, netthandhuita, rangapam, kalanuvakya, obadji, jivatvima, thakya, avathivinne, ekkamach jivite, akpamani.
You cannot have double action and triple action after you come into the truth, you have to live as an original person as you are.
Ondrani, paaviyai, illavatal, parisuthavanai, ondrani, analai, illavatal, nee, kuliirai.
Obai, ekku, paavkarakova, citina, netinam, shuttavatika, citina, unasama, citina, netinam, chithavasitina.
Either you be a sinner, or a saint, or else be cursed, or be hot.
Ye, irandhinani, kundikundin, natakriyark.
Obam, me, deka, athra, koragasa, oba, koragasami, nemadi, nekumaknisada.
But why are you hurting between the two, and not being any one of them?
Kanta deva manal, kattaripinbatukal, bhaal deva manal, bhaalipinbatukal.
Saminvahasid, devinvahasina, unvasi, valugamani, karannu, baal devata, deviannav, baal, lankamani, karannu.
If God be God, follow God, if Baal be God, you follow Baal.
Indhake, CPM, naam, nannakarad, paavamindusunnal, phiridhaan, uru thavuri, sidhal, than, paavamindri, neen, kodukarad.
Adha, CPM, ke, papiyakya, kinnivita, ita, barapathila, papiyakkala, nam, pavadai, eh, papiyakosin, handhunvannay.
This is the common understanding of the people in CPM, if you commit some serious sin, that is sin.
Rabojan, medukavendhi, uru viswasi, nyanasana, meduthaparag, rabojan, edukavital, adhu, avanikku paavamagum, adhu, avanikku vyadi, uru karanam, poruthanay, panni vittu, adhu, sayyavital, adhu, avanikku paavamagum, adhu, vyadi, uru karanamagum.
Vathrubathis, me, gani, minana, thuru, kalavati, na, kadukarani, nam, eh, kohuda, papiyakvivava, bariyakuvavanna, bari, isthakalayavanna, eh, ohu, thapapiyakavata, patvavava.
If you will fail to take communion after taking water baptism, it becomes a sin against you, against the Lord, and therefore, when you try to make a covenant, you have to pay it, otherwise, it becomes a sin against the Lord.
1 ram samuel, 3 madigaram, 13 vasanathile, nam, uuliyakarna, girdhalum, sari, eliyagirdhalum, sari, tanudiyapulliy, adakamal, pone, paavathinimitum, avanikku paavam, vandhadu, adhumathramala, maranam, vandhadu, endru, vedam, sutikaathikarad.
Palivini samay, thungeni parichede, dhaththungini pathi, kiatvivinava, tamanki darvan, thirinukri, manisa, odhutha, devinvahasikke, shapay, paminunavavanna, pavanav, novi, devinvahasivethi, nohutam, marani, pava, paminunavava.
And according to 1 Samuel, chapter 3, verse 13, we can see, because of his errors and mistakes, there was a curse that came upon his life, and therefore,
And according to 1 Samuel chapter 3 verse 13, we can see because of his errors and mistakes, there was a curse that came upon his life and therefore he became smitten and there was death also. According to what we read in 1 John chapter 5 verses 14 and 15. The sin is of two categories. One is a sin pertaining to death and the other one not pertaining to death. You can go home and read that list which consists twenty-three things, items, and those are sins pertaining to death. What are those twenty-three sins? Romans chapter 12 verse 31, a list is written on a list. Romans chapter 12 verse 31, a list is written on a list. Romans chapter 1 from verse 29 to 32, we can say read the words of Saint Paul where he has mentioned the list of sins and if you will actually observe them, we will all be in a defeated state. It is a very general thing that man is without good health right in the society today. There are people who are seen with sickness is because of the reasons they have no reconciliation. A particular sister became very sick. And fasting and prayers were held for her. And even prayer chains were held for her. Whatever that could be done scripturally, all that was done for her, but it was all futile. We can see that the Lord has done it for your health and recovery, we have done it scripturally, all for the best of us, but I hope that you have got a sister somewhere living close by, you stay there in her place for some time. And this is what Pastor Don had told her, whatever that could be done for your health and recovery, we have done it scripturally, all for the best of us, but I hope that you have got a sister somewhere living close by, you stay there in her place for some time. And this is who was taken, became ten stop all of a sudden. And this is what that six sister said, "I will go anywhere wherever you may tell me to go, but I will not go there because we will not talk in terms even before I join the ministry." And this is what Pastor Don said, "You must actually go there." And she asked pardon from her sister even before she could go to her house. This is the was sick for many long time, many long years, but she became healed, she got healed immediately. And this is what that six sister said, "I will go anywhere wherever you may tell me to go, but I will not go there because we will not talk in terms even before I join the ministry." According to what we read in the Gospels in Mark chapter 2, we can see there was a man of the policy, he was brought before Jesus and Jesus is looking at the man's sins, "Your sins are forgiven," only when Jesus said, "Your sins are forgiven," he became healed of his policy. According to what we read in the Gospels in Mark chapter 2, we can see there was a man of the policy, he was brought before Jesus and Jesus is looking at the man's sins, "Your sins are forgiven," only when Jesus said, "Your sins are forgiven," he became healed of his policy. When we turn to Job chapter 33, we can read about what happened to Job's life when he became sick. When we read Job chapter 33 verse 19. He was suffering so much in his bed of sickness. And he was experiencing strong pain in his bones. It is said about him, his life, a bald breath and his soul dangerous means. His bones were sticking out because he became so thin. It does not matter in what circumstances you were made sick or became sick, but remember there is a redeeming or healing virtue that which is able to heal you and make you to recover. What is the healing power and who is that person who is able to deliver you and make you to recover from your disease? When we turn to Job 33 and read verse 24. I have found the redeeming item. Who is able to redeem us? And even according to what we read in 1 Timothy chapter 2 verse 6, Jesus Christ is that ransom who became a sacrifice for us and he became a ransom for us to be testified in due time. If you will find out who this ransom is, that which is that is Lord Jesus Christ and also accept this as Jesus ransom as a personal saving in your life, you have stepped out into the first step of conversion. One instance after I finished the meeting, there was a thin-looking person who was bald-headed and who looked so frail, he came up to me. He had tied a lot of threads round his wrists, he would have gone to so many religious places for his recovery and the wife brought this man up to me. And after some days a baptismal service was held. And in order to take baptism even on that day, there was a person who approached, he looked very fat and healthy-looking and he came along with his child. Looking at this man, I said, "You have just come today, you have to come continually in order to take water baptism here." But this is what he said, "I've been coming every month." And this is what the man said, "I'm the same man whom you may have seen as a skeleton coming along with my wife and the Lord Jesus has healed me now." When you reach Job 33, 25, you will be able to see the end results of obtaining the ransom in your life, seeking out to him and finding it out and experiencing that ransom in your life. His flesh shall be fresher than a child. This is the reason for the reason of the sickness of man's life, we see it's all because of the sins in his life and the failures and he is driven towards them. And the second reason. When we turn to Matthew 12 and read verse 22. And this man, he had some was being tormented with the devil with an evil spirit and he himself says he is possessed with the devil. When we turn to Matthew 15, 28, we can see when the Lord Jesus revealed that spirit, that child was made whole or it became normal. You need to understand right now that the second reason for sickness is the devil. When we turn to Luke 13, 16. This woman was stooping for thirteen years, she could not lift up herself and Jesus said she was tormented with the spirit of infirmity. There is no definite name for this sickness, it was simply known as the spirit of infirmity. And another example, 1 Corinthians 7:7, a mole, a demon, a beast, it was eaten by a beast. And another reason or an example for this sickness is we can read in 2 Corinthians chapter 12 verse 7, as to how Paul was tormented because of the thorn in the flesh and it was by the messenger of Satan. Even today in order to reduce the speed or the pace of the people, we see that Satan's power is working against the people who are powerful, popular and famous. We can see Satanic church also growing abundantly. A particular man when he was on his journey abroad, he had taken a packet of biscuits and started eating the biscuits. For the sake of manner, he has offered the biscuits to the next person and also wanted him to eat it. He said sorry. And he wanted to know the reason. The other man said, "I don't want it because I'm fasting." This man who offered the biscuit, he was a nominal Christian and he was put to shame thinking that the other man was fasting when he is also Christian. Immediately he had asked the other man to which denomination do you belong. And the man who was fasting, he had said, "I'm a member of the satanic church." This man then questioned, "Do they fast in the satanic church?" And this is what that other man said, "Yes, we fast for three main reasons." and it was by the messenger of Satan.[424.83][424.88][S02. You'll be armed to the name of God.[428.83][428.88][S02. You'll be armed to the name of God.[432.83][432.88][S02. You'll be armed to the name of God.[436.83][436.88][S02. You'll be armed to the name of God.[440.83][440.88][S02. Even today, in order to reduce the speed or the pace of the people,[445.83][445.88][S02. We see that Satan's power is working against the people[449.83][449.88][S02. Who are powerful, popular and famous.[453.83][453.88][S02. We can see Satanic church also growing abundantly.[457.83][457.88][S02. A particular man, when he was on his journey abroad,[461.83][461.88][S02. He had taken a packet of biscuits and started eating the biscuits.[465.83][465.88][S02. For the sake of manner, he has offered the biscuits to the next person[470.83][470.88][S02. And also wanted him to eat it.[474.83][474.88][S02. He said sorry.[478.83][478.88][S02. And he wanted to know the reason.[482.83][482.88][S02. The other man said, I don't want it because I'm fasting.[486.83][486.88][S02. The other man said, I don't want it because I'm fasting.[490.83][490.88][S02. The other man said, I don't want it because I'm fasting.[494.83][494.88][S02. This man who offered the biscuit, he was a nominal Christian,[498.83][498.88][S02. And he was put to shame thinking that the other man was fasting,[502.83][502.88][S02. When he is also Christian.[506.83][506.88][S02. Immediately, he had asked the other man to which denomination do you belong?[510.83][510.88][S02. And the man who was fasting, he was a Saturnic church member.[514.83][514.88][S02. And the man who was fasting, he was a Saturnic church member.[518.83][518.88][S02. This man who offered the biscuit, he was a nominal Christian,[522.83][522.88][S02. And he was put to shame thinking that the other man was fasting,[526.83][526.88][S02. When he is also Christian.[530.83][530.88][S02. Immediately, he had asked the other man to which denomination do you belong?[534.83][534.88][S02. And the man who was fasting, he was a Saturnic church member.[538.83][538.88][S02. And the man who was fasting, he had said, I'm a member of the Saturnic church.[542.83][542.88][S02. This man who offered the biscuit, he was a nominal Christian,[546.83][546.88][S02. And he was put to shame thinking that the other man was fasting,[550.83][550.88][S02. When he is also Christian.[554.83][554.88][S02. Immediately, he had asked the other man to which denomination do you belong?[558.83][558.88][S02. And the man who was fasting, he had said, I'm a member of the Saturnic church.[562.83][562.88][S02. This man had questioned, do they fast in the Saturnic church?[566.83][566.88][S02. And this is what the other man said, yes, we fast for three main reasons.[572.83][572.88][S02. And he wanted to know what those reasons are.[576.83][576.88][S02. And this is what he said, this is our first target.[580.83][580.88][S02. Good spiritual healthy families should have separation, they must divorce.[584.83][584.88][S02. And the second reason, very good people, spiritual people,[588.83][588.88][S02. They should meet with an accident and be put to death.[592.83][592.88][S02. And very good servants of God should get caught or entangled in adultery.[596.83][596.88][S02. So you try to understand why the people, the members of the Saturnic church, fast.[600.83][600.88][S02. If you're unable to live with your spouse anymore,[604.83][604.88][S02. And if you won't divorce,[607.83][607.88][S02. Just remember that is the result or the answer[611.83][611.88][S02. Of the prayers that are offered by the Saturnic church.[615.83][615.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11,[619.83][619.88][S02. As to how the spirit of Jezebel is working against God's people in the end times.[623.83][623.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[627.83][627.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[631.83][631.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[635.83][635.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[639.83][639.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[643.83][643.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[647.83][647.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[651.83][651.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:11.[655.83][655.88][S02. So you try to understand why the people, the members of the Saturnic church, fast.[660.83][660.88][S02. If you're unable to live with your spouse anymore,[664.83][664.88][S02. And if you won't divorce,[667.83][667.88][S02. Just remember that is the result or the answer[671.83][671.88][S02. Of the prayers that are offered by the Saturnic church.[675.83][675.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:21,[679.83][679.88][S02. As to how the spirit of Jezebel is working against God's people in the end times.[683.83][683.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:22.[687.83][687.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:23.[691.83][691.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:24.[695.83][695.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:25.[699.83][699.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:26.[703.83][703.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:27.[707.83][707.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:28.[711.83][711.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:29.[715.83][715.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:30.[719.83][719.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:31.[723.83][723.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:32.[727.83][727.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:33.[731.83][731.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:34.[735.83][735.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:35.[739.83][739.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:36.[743.83][743.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:37.[747.83][747.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:38.[751.83][751.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:39.[755.83][755.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:40.[759.83][759.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:41.[763.83][763.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:42.[767.83][767.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:43.[771.83][771.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:44.[775.83][775.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:45.[779.83][779.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:46.[783.83][783.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:47.[787.83][787.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:48.[791.83][791.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:49.[795.83][795.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:50.[799.83][799.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:51.[803.83][803.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:52.[807.83][807.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:53.[811.83][811.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:54.[815.83][815.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:55.[819.83][819.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:56.[823.83][823.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:57.[827.83][827.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:58.[831.83][831.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:59.[835.83][835.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:60.[839.83][839.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:61.[843.83][843.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:62.[847.83][847.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:63.[851.83][851.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:64.[855.83][855.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:65.[859.83][859.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:66.[863.83][863.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:67.[867.83][867.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:68.[871.83][871.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:69.[875.83][875.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:70.[879.83][879.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:71.[883.83][883.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:72.[887.83][887.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:73.[891.83][891.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:74.[895.83][895.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:75.[899.83][899.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:76.[903.83][903.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:77.[907.83][907.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:78.[911.83][911.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:79.[915.83][915.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:80.[919.83][919.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:81.[923.83][923.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:82.[927.83][927.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:83.[931.83][931.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:84.[935.83][935.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:85.[939.83][939.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:86.[943.83][943.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:87.[947.83][947.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:88.[951.83][951.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:89.[955.83][955.88][S02. This is what we read in Revelation 2:90.[959.83][959.88][S02. This could be sicknesses for the people of the world[963.83][963.88][S02. And even according to the scriptures because of lack of sleep,[967.83][967.88][S02. Lack of rest and also abundance of work and so and so forth.[971.83][971.88][S02. This could be sicknesses for the people of the world[975.83][975.88][S02. And even according to the scriptures because of lack of sleep,[979.83][979.88][S02. Lack of rest and also abundance of work and so and so forth.[983.83][983.88][S02. This could be sicknesses for the people of the world[987.83][987.88][S02. And even according to the scriptures because of lack of sleep,[991.83][991.88][S02. Lack of rest and also abundance of work and so and so forth.[995.83][995.88][S02. This could be sicknesses for the people of the world[999.83][999.88][S02. And even according to the scriptures because of lack of sleep,[1003.83][1003.88][S02. Lack of rest and also abundance of work and so and so forth.[1007.83][1007.88][S02. This is the manner in the scriptures you can read about so many people who became sick.[1011.83][1011.88][S02. This was the man who was a paralytic.[1015.83][1015.88][S02. This was the woman who had the issue of that for 12 years.[1021.83][1021.88][S02. This was the woman who was bound together for 18 years.[1025.83][1025.88][S02. This was the woman who was bound together for 18 years.[1030.83][1030.88][S02. This was the woman who was bound together for 38 years.[1034.83][1034.88][S02. This was the woman who was bound together for 38 years.[1038.83][1038.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was by the pool of Betis staff for 38 years.[1042.83][1042.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1046.83][1046.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1050.83][1050.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1054.83][1054.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1058.83][1058.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1062.83][1062.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1066.83][1066.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1070.83][1070.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1074.83][1074.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1078.83][1078.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1082.83][1082.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1086.83][1086.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1090.83][1090.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1094.83][1094.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1098.83][1098.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1102.83][1102.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1106.83][1106.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1110.83][1110.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1114.83][1114.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1118.83][1118.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1122.83][1122.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1126.83][1126.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1130.83][1130.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1134.83][1134.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1138.83][1138.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1142.83][1142.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1146.83][1146.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1150.83][1150.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1154.83][1154.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was slain from his mother's womb at the gate beautiful.[1158.83][1158.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1162.83][1162.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1166.83][1166.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1170.83][1170.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1174.83][1174.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1178.83][1178.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1182.83][1182.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1186.83][1186.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1190.83][1190.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1194.83][1194.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1198.83][1198.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1202.83][1202.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1206.83][1206.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1210.83][1210.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1214.83][1214.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1218.83][1218.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1222.83][1222.88][S02. This is what we read in Philippians 11:30.[1226.83][1226.88][S02. When a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,[1230.83][1230.88][S02. He will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too.[1234.83][1234.88][S02. This is what we read in Philippians 11:30.[1238.83][1238.88][S02. When a man will partake of the Lord's communion unworthily, not sanctifying himself,[1242.83][1242.88][S02. He will become weak, he will become sick and eventually even sleep too.[1246.83][1246.88][S02. This is what we read about the people who became gluttonous[1250.83][1250.88][S02. And they become sick because they have no victory over food.[1254.83][1254.88][S02. This is what we read about the people who became gluttonous[1258.83][1258.88][S02. And they become sick because they have no victory over food.[1262.83][1262.88][S02. This is what we read about the people who became gluttonous[1266.83][1266.88][S02. And they become sick because they have no victory over food.[1270.83][1270.88][S02. This is what we read about the people who became gluttonous[1274.83][1274.88][S02. And they become sick because they have no victory over flesh, over meat,[1278.83][1278.88][S02. And even while the meat was in their mouth, they got destroyed.[1282.83][1282.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1286.83][1286.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1290.83][1290.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1294.83][1294.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1298.83][1298.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1302.83][1302.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1306.83][1306.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1310.83][1310.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1314.83][1314.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1318.83][1318.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1322.83][1322.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1326.83][1326.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1330.83][1330.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1334.83][1334.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1338.83][1338.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who fell from the loft downward[1342.83][1342.88][S02. And he became sick and got killed.[1346.83][1346.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1350.83][1350.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1354.83][1354.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1358.83][1358.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1362.83][1362.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1366.83][1366.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1370.83][1370.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1374.83][1374.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1378.83][1378.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1382.83][1382.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1386.83][1386.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1390.83][1390.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1394.83][1394.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1398.83][1398.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1402.83][1402.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1406.83][1406.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1410.83][1410.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1414.83][1414.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1418.83][1418.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1422.83][1422.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1426.83][1426.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1430.83][1430.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1434.83][1434.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1438.83][1438.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1442.83][1442.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1446.83][1446.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1450.83][1450.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1454.83][1454.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1458.83][1458.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1462.83][1462.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who passed away[1466.83][1466.88][S02. And she became sick and then passed away.[1469.83][1469.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who passed away[1473.83][1473.88][S02. Dear beloved, I have placed before you the three reasons.[1477.83][1477.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1481.83][1481.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1485.83][1485.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1489.83][1489.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1493.83][1493.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1497.83][1497.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1501.83][1501.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1505.83][1505.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1509.83][1509.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1513.83][1513.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1517.83][1517.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1521.83][1521.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1525.83][1525.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1529.83][1529.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1533.83][1533.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1537.83][1537.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1541.83][1541.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1545.83][1545.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1549.83][1549.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1553.83][1553.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1557.83][1557.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1561.83][1561.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1565.83][1565.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1569.83][1569.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1573.83][1573.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1577.83][1577.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1581.83][1581.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1585.83][1585.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1589.83][1589.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1593.83][1593.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1597.83][1597.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1601.83][1601.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1605.83][1605.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1609.83][1609.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1613.83][1613.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1617.83][1617.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1621.83][1621.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1625.83][1625.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1629.83][1629.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1633.83][1633.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1637.83][1637.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1641.83][1641.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1645.83][1645.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1649.83][1649.88][S02. This is what Job says in Job 3:26.[1653.83][1653.88][S02. I have no quietness and the trouble has come upon me.[1657.83][1657.88][S02. I have no safety too.[1661.83][1661.88][S02. This could not be just one sickness, it could be so many sicknesses striving with you.[1665.83][1665.88][S02. This is what we read in Philippians 11:22.[1669.83][1669.88][S02. This is what we read in Philippians 11:23.[1673.83][1673.88][S02. This is what we read in Philippians 11:24.[1677.83][1677.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1681.83][1681.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1685.83][1685.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1689.83][1689.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1693.83][1693.88][S02. This is what we read in Isaiah 1:6 from the soul of the foot even unto the head.[1697.83][1697.88][S02. There is no soundness in it because it is full of beautifying wounds.[1701.83][1701.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1705.83][1705.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1709.83][1709.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1713.83][1713.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1717.83][1717.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1721.83][1721.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1725.83][1725.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1729.83][1729.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1733.83][1733.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1737.83][1737.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1741.83][1741.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1745.83][1745.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1749.83][1749.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1753.83][1753.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1757.83][1757.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1761.83][1761.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1765.83][1765.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1769.83][1769.88][S02. This is the reason as to why I taught so many reasons[1773.83][1773.88][S02. For your sickness in the light of the evidence of the word of God.[1777.83][1777.88][S02. It is for you to analyze your problem and come out of your sickness.[1781.83][1781.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1785.83][1785.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1789.83][1789.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1793.83][1793.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1797.83][1797.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1801.83][1801.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.[1805.83][1805.88][S02. This is what we read about the man who was sick on death because of striving in the ministry for a long time.
In 11:65, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
May you believe that by his stripes you are healed.
In 11:66, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
And may you believe that Jesus has all the power and authority to heal you of your sickness.
In 11:67, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:67, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. You need to believe that Jesus has destroyed all the powers of Satan that brings all the sickness upon you, he has bruised the head of Satan and has overcome that Satan, that sickness.
In 11:68, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:68, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. And even in the same times, he said, "It is not only for the people who lived a full time, but even unto you, in the end times, Jesus has trampled the head of Satan on his feet."
In 11:69, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:70, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. The devil may bring sickness like the floods and the devil may bring sicknesses and distresses like the floods against your life and ministry, but if you have believed that Jesus will overcome all of them for you, be erect on your knees.
In 11:71, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:72, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. Even by faith, when you shall be erect on your knees by the name of the Jesus of God, all these powers will be destroyed and you will have victory.
In 11:73, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:74, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. Whatever the sickness or reasons may be, it should flee away from this hall, from your family, from your spouse and from your children.
In 11:75, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:76, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. These sicknesses made your life dark and also made your ministry as one which was full of darkness.
In 11:77, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:78, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. The son of righteousness who is able to enlighten every man, he shall shine forth in your life, on the his wings you will have healing.
In 11:79, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
How many of you feel that the Lord is moving, even on the first day of our meeting?
In 11:80, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Four, five minutes, don't open your eyes.
In 11:81, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Let now get up and go away from this hall.
In 11:82, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
If possible, be erect on your knees and keep on telling the Lord, "Lord, heal me."
In 11:83, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Oh Lord, you wash me, I will be made as white.
In 11:84, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Oh Lord, you heal me, I will be healed.
In 11:85, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
You arise for me, I will have victory.
In 11:86, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
This is the moment in which Jesus will heal you.
In 11:87, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
You can expect God to heal you hundred percent.
In 11:88, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Other power can withstand you.
In 11:89, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Put on your power.
In 11:90, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Put on your strength.
In 11:91, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Keep up your fire.
In 11:92, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Jesus will heal you.
In 11:93, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. Amen, amen. May God have mercy on you.
We read in 11:94, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died.
In 11:95, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Only such people raise your right hand.
In 11:96, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:97, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. Don't be boasting about your sickness, don't say that sickness, this sickness, because the devil is moving, working mightily subtly.
In 11:98, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:99, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. Oh Lord, at this age twenty-three, you mention one word for my healing sake.
In 11:10, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Oh, cry out to God.
In 11:11, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Mistake of healing.
In 11:12, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. Hallelujah.
In Jesus, hallelujah, hallelujah. In Jesus, hallelujah, hallelujah. In Jesus, hallelujah, in Jesus, hallelujah, in Jesus, hallelujah, hallelujah. Living, sowing, hallelujah.
In 11:13, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Living, sowing, hallelujah. In Jesus, hallelujah, in Jesus, hallelujah, in Jesus, hallelujah, hallelujah. In Jesus, hallelujah, in Jesus, hallelujah, in Jesus, hallelujah, hallelujah. Living, sowing, hallelujah. Living, sowing, hallelujah. Living, sowing, hallelujah, living, sowing, hallelujah, living, sowing, hallelujah, hallelujah.
In 11:14, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Living, sowing, hallelujah. Living, sowing, hallelujah, living, sowing, hallelujah, living, sowing, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Living, sowing, hallelujah. Living, sowing, hallelujah. Living, sowing, hallelujah, living, sowing, hallelujah, living, sowing, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, amen. A man said, "And therefore, you will be able to help me."
We read in 11:15, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. A father says, "Oh Lord, you come and keep your hand upon me, I will be healed."
A man said, "And therefore, you will be able to help me."
We read in 11:16, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. And this is what our master said, "If you will speak one word for the sake of my servants, he will be healed."
A man said, "And therefore, you will be able to help me."
We read in 11:17, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. How many of you are going to tell at this meeting? Oh Lord, you touch me, speak one word, I will be healed.
In 11:18, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. Amen. The sickness has departed from you right now. The sickness has departed from you right now.
We read in 11:19, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. We read in 11:20, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died.
One minute, one minute.
Just one minute.
The sickness has departed from you. The sickness has departed from you.
We read in 11:21, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. Sickness should not simply depart from you and the devil also simply should not depart from you, it should be rooted out from your life.
One minute, one minute.
Just one minute.
Why do I say so? It is wrong.
We read in 11:22, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. When the sickness departs from you, you may think that you are ill, after two days you will fall ill again, so that is how it works when it departs.
In 11:23, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:24, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. When the sun shall heal you, you will have perfect soundness, there will be no more sickness.
In 11:25, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. Amen, amen. If you say one word, I will be healed.
We read in 11:26, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. You speak one word, I will be healed, you just rise up and I will have victory.
In 11:27, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:28, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:29, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:30, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:31, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:32, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:33, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:34, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:35, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:36, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. Hallelujah. 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 In 11:37, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:38, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:39, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:40, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:41, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:42, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. In 11:43, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. Amen. You have been waiting for this.
We read in 11:44, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died.
In 11:45, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:46, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. How many of you believe that this is the day in which the Lord shall heal you?
If you suffer from your diseases, if you suffer from your diseases, if you suffer from your diseases, in the name of Jesus, you will have victory.
We read in 11:47, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. Are you sick in the head, are you sick in your legs, in your feet, are you sick in your bowels, in the name of Jesus, you should be healed right now.
In 11:48, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
Then, Divya Saniparakshavi, Aali Piyah. This is the moment in which the anointing of divine health is going to descend upon you.
In 11:49, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it.
We read in 11:50, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. We read in 11:51, we can read about the man who became stricken with the sickness that was close unto death and he too died. Raise up the anointing of divine healing, divine health is getting into your body.
In 11:52, when you see this, you will see that they are not successful in anything, but they are suffering because of it. Hallelujah. 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 All diseases are dead. 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 There is power, power, all the world keep power in the blood. All the blood, there is power, power, all the world keep power in the blood. All diseases are dead. 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 Hallelujah.